Alright, welcome everybody. This is part two of our never-ending series on the new residential purchase agreements. Or we're starting to be a bit late, but you know, at least we're starting. I wasn't entirely sure that was gonna happen. So where we left off was, I'm gonna start really here on paragraph four in the contract. We finished the grid, which includes a lot of the juicy stuff about how long and what we're, you know, we're including. And I think you all can see my screen now, right? I believe that's true. And just make sure. Yes, there we go. And there's copies of the handouts and all that sort of stuff. I'll try to keep up with questions. I may not be able to answer them until we get to the end, but we'll see how it goes. So one of the differences between the old contracts plural and the new contract singular is is that a lot of the old contracts are going away. So for example, there's not going to be a separate probate contract, a separate manufactured home contract. Those two are, because they're 90 to 95% the same as the residential purchase contract, they're gonna be handled through an addendum. I believe the addendums have been written, but they haven't really been released yet. And next year, probably, right? When everything is released, I may go through all of the other different addendums. There's a new form called the tenant, a little spotlight going, occupied property, the TOPA. And which is, when there's still tenants in the property, tenancy in common and stock cooperatives, not that common. Tenancy in common purchases are, happened in San Francisco. I've actually sold a property with a stock co-op. Those are other, other kinds of addendums that would go with the purchase contract rather than the new contract. Other addenda, so a backup offer addendum, right? That's something that you can now just check. So that you can present an offer as a backup. In the past, it wasn't a box you could check. There's a septic well, property monument. They've added more of the addendums that you can check. I may have mentioned last week, when you have a buyer or seller that intends to do it, then 31 exchange, they're gonna want to attach those addendums because it requires that the other side, I would need them to cooperate, which means you consume if they didn't and it caused you, you know, to lose money if you define. So additional items affecting the price. Let's just say, this will be a little more. So you'll be noticing that a lot of the paragraphs may kind of sort of look the same, but there used to be places you could write in numbers. Let's start with the deposit. I think I'm gonna keep my spotlight here. So the buyer and seller shall deposit directly to escrow holder. That's, that's a change, right? In the past, I mean, really long time ago, it wasn't uncommon for people to give real estate agents checks for the agent to give to escrow. Right now, that's been removed, so that we, we don't want checks. By the way, you do not want the check. If a method other than wire transfer is specified in 3D1, that's back in the grid, and such method is unacceptable to escrow holder, then upon notice from escrow holder delivered should be by wire transfer. Now, what the old contract said was you could check boxes. You could say cashier's check, it's a personal check. The default setting right now is wire transfer. And if you pick, if it's back in that paragraph, which is in the grid, 3D1, if you pick personal check, right? Which would be something you'd have to write in, right? It's no longer a default choice. And escrow says, we don't want personal checks. We don't accept personal checks, right? You put in Bitcoin or something, escrow says, we don't, we don't take that. What you have to do is go back to wire transfer. Increased deposit, we don't see that much. I think I mentioned it last week. An increased deposit would be the kind of thing you would do if it was a buyer's market or a buyer's market for a given property, and they don't have inspections and reports, and there aren't gonna be multiple offers. In the old days, we would put down 1% to begin with, and then increase it by 2% to get to the 3% maximum that you could keep under liquidated damages. We would do that. Let's see if I need to look at something, a bit of an echo. Is everybody else okay with my voice? Everybody else is okay? Anybody having great difficulties? I hope not. Okay. So some people raising their hands. I'm, I'm happy that I'm able to speak at all, right? With the new computer up. Alright, so, but we're not, that's increased deposit. That stepping up of the deposit is not something that we typically do these days. See if I can make that a little better. I don't know if that helps with the microphone. And we're moving forward. Retention of deposits. Paragraph 29, if initial by parties or otherwise incorporated, specifies a remedy for buyers to fall. What that's referring to is liquidated damages. Buyer and seller advise to consult with a qualified real estate attorney before adding any other clause specifying remedy. Now, what we're going on, let me just say this. Let's say that, can you review if we need to increase deposit on the counteroffer that is higher than the offer price? Can you review? So the, thank you Dee Dee for your question. I think what you're asking is, if there's a counteroffer, and the counteroffer simply changes the price, does that automatically change the deposit? The answer is no. How would you do that if you were countering and you wanted the deposit to match the new price? You would have to put that into the counteroffer, right? That's, that's the short answer. Now, where I'm going with paragraph A3. Have you ever had a real estate agent ask for the deposit to be a non-refundable deposit? Or to put in a clause that says, if you don't close on time, you're gonna have to pay a thousand dollars a day until you close? Now, I see agents trying to do that. According to the lawyers of the California Association of Realtors, those kinds of clauses are very, very difficult to enforce. And in order to have one that would be enforceable, you're really going to need a lawyer to write a clause. And according to lawyer from the CAR, the, the, to have all the disclaimers to make something like that enforceable takes up about an entire page. So I see agents writing in, you owe so many hundreds of dollars every day that you're late or whatever, or that the deposit is non-refundable. That's not an easy thing to do in California. Any such clause anyhow. So you could see anything about release or forfeiture deposit or making a deposit non-refundable. You should talk to a lawyer if you want to do this. Put that in the, in the, in the contract. The CAR lawyers will talk about it. But generally, they say they're gonna tell you to go get your own lawyer to write up something to make that actually a workable thing. Just because it's in a contract doesn't necessarily mean the law's going to enforce it. It has to comply with other criteria. If it's an all cash offer, then that's pretty self-explanatory. Not a big difference here. It makes it clear that the agreement is not contingent upon the buyer obtaining the loan. So that's what you would assume, that an all cash offer would mean, and the buyer has to deliver written verification of funds. Loans, not a lot different here. The grid actually has where you can write in information about the loan. And by that, I mean interest rates and things like that. If you're making an offer that is not, that does not have a loan contingency, then being specific about interest rates and points and that sort of thing isn't that important? Because the loan isn't a contingency. If you want the loan to be a contingency, and then you could put in an interest rate no greater than 4%, with points no greater than 1% or whatever, and then if you are unable to get a loan under those terms, you could use that as an out because you weren't able to get the loan that you made a contingency on. Paragraph C3 is something new. It says that the buyer authorizes seller and seller's authorized agent to contact buyer's lender to determine the status of any buyer's loan specified in 3E or any alter, alternate loan the buyer pursues, whether or not a contingency of this agreement. If the contact information for buyer's lender is different from that provided under the terms of paragraph 6B, buyer shall deliver updated contact information with one day of sale. What, what's going on here? Now, first of all, what this is saying is, is that the listing agent typically, or the seller, has a right to call your loan agent up if you represent a buyer and ask them questions about the status of the loan. Now, if you give a pre-approval letter that has one lender on it, and now you've switched to another lender, what this is going to say is, is that you need to now tell the seller and the listing agent who the new lender is, and get them, and give them the right to actually contact them and see how you're doing. Now, normally, I would say, if you're representing a buyer and the loan agent will not talk to the listing agent or to the seller about the status of your client's loan, you might wanna get another loaning, right? Because good loan agents would be willing to do that. And sometimes that's made a difference for me, the persuasiveness of my loan agent that they in fact can get the loan and that everything is gonna be okay. This, the thing about changing lenders is gonna come up again. FHA and VA, I think I explained this when we went to the grid. Even if you've made a non-contingent offer, no appraisal, no loan, no contingencies, FHA and VA say there are contingencies by law, the property's gonna have to appraise. And if it doesn't, whether you got an appraisal contingency in the contract or not, there's an appraisal contingency. You'll also notice that it adds to it. It says that buyer shall within the time specified in 3E1, which I believe is either five or seven days, I'd have to look at it again, deliver to seller written notice RR of any lender requirements that buyer requests seller to pay for or otherwise correct, or that there are no lender requirements. Now, this is only for FHA and VA. So what this is saying is whether or not, and if you're not familiar with this, because some of us in the Silicon Valley, Bay area, don't do a lot of FHA and VA loans because of the price. But FHA typically wants to see a section one clearance. And VA typically would like a section one and a section two clearance. So sometimes when they look at it, they're gonna come up with a list of things that have to be fixed. And what this is saying is that even if they say nothing needs to be fixed, you're supposed to let them know, them being the seller and the seller's agent, that nothing needs to be fixed, that there are no lender requirements. Notwithstanding seller's agreement that a buyer be obtained FHA or VA financing, seller has no obligation to pay or satisfy any of the lender's requirements unless agreed in writing. So what that means is that if you have an FHA or a VA loan, and they say you need to do a section one clearance, this doesn't obligate the seller to pay for the section one clearance. They're not obligated to do that. Though under the, this has been true for a while, this is something the buyer can pay for. The balance is gonna be deposited in escrow. Limits on credits to a buyer. Any credit to buyer from any source, that would mean from the seller, it would mean from the buyer's agent. For closing or other costs that are agreed to by the parties, contractual credit shall be disclosed to buyer's lender, if any, and made at close of escrow. If the total credit allowed by buyer's lender is less than the contractual credit, then the contractual credit from seller shall be reduced to the lender allowable credit. And here's the kicker, in the absence of a separate agreement between the parties, there shall be no automatic adjustment to the purchase price to make up for the difference between the contractual credit and the lender allowed credit. So let's say the seller says, I'll give the buyer fifteen thousand dollars or sort of credit towards closing costs. And the lender says, you can't have that much credit for the closing costs. You can only have twelve thousand dollars, because it's just the way the loan is. What that means is that other three thousand dollars, the buyer is not going to get that some other way. It's not gonna be a red envelope, you know, left in the house when they move in on the first day. The seller is not going to adjust the price. By the way, this is also true if you say to your buyer, I'll give you a credit of 50% of my commission, 25% of my commission, whatever that is, and that credit exceeds the amount of credit that the lender will allow, then the buyer just doesn't get that credit, just doesn't get it. Now, obviously, you might want to ask your lender in advance of doing this, what are the limits for this particular loan when it comes to credit? If you're asking the seller to give the buyer credit, or you're giving the buyer credit, talk to your loan agent. Are there limits on how much credit can be given? Many of them in fact do have limits. Additional financing terms, verification of down payment and closing costs. In the old form, this is relating back to the grid again. But in the old form, it, it basically gave you boxes to check either attached or within three days. Now, the default is your verification of funds to close is already attached, right? It says, and may be made by buyer or buyer's lender or loan broker pursuant to 6B. Those words are a little bit different. So what constitutes, by the way, in the bids, this is usually referred to as proof of funds, okay? When you see, new agents sometimes ask me, because they're looking at, you know, the, the private remarks, and it talks about an EMD, and it talks about a POF, and they're trying to figure out what is a POF or an EMD, you know? I usually tell agents that EMD is an emergency medical dispatch. But anyhow, I say they'll just make up stuff. So what constitutes proof of funds? Now, you might have an opinion, and I might have an opinion, but you'll notice that the contract is not specific about that. So let's say your loan agent, you've got a real pre-approval. And your loan agent, the lender, has verified that the buyer has sufficient assets to close the transaction and is willing to say that in the pre-approval letter. Now, some won't, right? But again, I might get a different lender. My lender does. So when the lender says, we have verified that the buyer has sufficient assets to close, and they've included that in the pre-approval letter, that would also constitute proof of funds, which is the verification of the down payment and closing costs. Otherwise, you're giving them screenshots of bank statements or stock statements, things like that. Verification of loan applications. Again, it's referring back to the grid. I'm not gonna jump back and forth to each one. I haven't memorized them all yet anyhow. But it basically says that you should, by the way, have a pre-approval or pre-qualification letter or something when you're presenting an offer. You should already have one. And what it either says back in paragraph 3H3 in the grid, is that you either have one, or you agree to get one within a particular period of time, usually within a few days. It says that, remember, a letter from buyer's lender or loan broker stating that based on review of buyer's written application and credit report, buyer is pre-qualified or pre-approved for any new loan specified in 3E. Alright, so if you're writing an offer, the loan is two million dollars, something like that, one million dollars. In my market, I see big loans, then you would need a letter that says they can afford to get it. If any loan application is an adjustable rate, the pre-qualification or pre-approval letter shall be based on the qualifying rate, not the initial rate. I'm not gonna get into that right now, because we don't do a lot of adjustables. That used to be a big thing. There was a rate called a teaser rate. And the teaser rate would typically be a lot lower than the qualifying rate. And anyhow, just saying, right? We're not gonna get into that. So this is simply saying that you should have a pre-approval letter when you submit the offer, or based upon paragraph 3H3 in the grid, you're promising to get one quickly. And in a typical market, by the way, if you're buyer, I think, let's, let's face it. If I'm the seller and I get two offers, and they're both for eight hundred thousand, one is pre-approved and the other one isn't, but they're going to be, I'm going with the one that's pre-approved. If, when would I go with the one that isn't pre-approved? And by the way, this is a script that I use. I used it just yesterday in talking with a client. Is that if you don't have a pre-approval letter, you're going to have to offer more than the ones that do in order to get the seller's attention. You understand, if they're the same amount, we're going with the buyer who has the best financing. So how much more, how much more would your client have to offer in order to get the seller to take a risk that in fact you can't afford to buy the property? How much more? And the answer usually is a lot more. And most of the time, it doesn't matter how much more, they're gonna take the one that's pre-approved, get pre-approval. Buyer stated financing, a little bit of changes here. Now, there's some parts of this that seem, may seem contradictory. Seller is relying on buyer's representation of the type of financing specified, included but not limited to all cash amount of down payment contingent or non-contingent level. Seller has agreed to a specific closing day price and to sell the buyer in reliance on buyer stated financing. Now, if we stop right there, it would seem like you have to get the loan that you mentioned when you were filling out the grid. But it goes on. Buyer shall pursue the financing specified in this agreement. But then it says, even if buyer also elects to pursue an alternative form of financing. Now, what that is saying is, is that the buyer can pursue an alternative form of financing. That's what it said. Seller has no obligation to cooperate with buyer's effort for obtain any financing other than that specified in the agreement, but shall not interfere with closing at the purchase price on the close of escrow date, even if based with on alternate financing. Alright, so what would that, let's say, we make an offer that's all cash. But in fact, the client doesn't want to pay cash. Now, one of the giveaways is how long do you want for a close of escrow? Because if it's really all cash, you could close in 10 days. But if you're making an all cash offer, but you need three weeks or 30 days in order to close, that makes me suspicious if I'm the listing agent, that maybe you really aren't doing cash. So however, this is sort of the no harm, no foul rule. If you can close on time, then it doesn't cost the seller anything, go for it. But it says that two different things. One, that the seller has no obligation to cooperate, but also that they can interfere. What would that be? Well, let me, in the, I, I didn't have time today, because I was just trying to get the thing to launch and helping people write offers. But what if we made an offer and it was all cash? We are giving ourselves 30 days to close. And we're shifting to getting the loan. Now, what's going, and we are making an offer with no contingencies, no appraisal contingency, no loan contingency, no inspection contingency, but we need to get the property appraised. Otherwise, the lender won't make the loan. The question would be for you guys, does the seller have to allow the appraiser to come and appraise the property? If it says that there's no appraisal contingency, and if we presented an all cash offer, and the answer is, well, yeah, because there's another clause in the contract that says that the buyer has, and the default is 17 days. Last week, when I went through all the different days, it says the buyer has 17 days to investigate the property. Now, and it says that the buyer has that right, even if the buyer doesn't have any contingencies. So during that 17-day period, the buyer could have an appraiser come and work at the property and get it appraised. There's also the argument that the seller shall not interfere, which means if during the 17 days that the buyer has to conduct investigations, even if the buyer doesn't have contingencies, and the seller says, no, I'm not allowing you in, that's a violation of the contract and it's interfering with the closing. Buyer's inability to obtain alternative financing does not exclude buyer from the obligation to purchase the property in close escrow as specified. Closing and possession, not a lot here. The occupancy, you know, that refers back to the grid. Is it owner occupied? I think the three choices were owner occupied, primary residence, investment property, or second home, that's in the new grid. And the reason we would have those boxes in the grid is because it affects your loan terms, whether or not it's a primary residence or what's going, it affects your loan terms. Wouldn't it be good to, if you were the seller, to always have an as is addendum in the contract? Well, it's probably not needed, because you can see in paragraph seven, unless otherwise agreed, the property shall be delivered as is in its present physical condition as of the date of acceptance. Now, the property, including spa, landscaping, whatever, maintained in substantially the same condition as of the date of acceptance. All debris and personal property not included in the sale shall be removed by the close of escrow or at the time possession is given to the buyer, if not the same day. Now, there's a couple things here. We say I have a question. If there's no appraisal contingency, can we still get an appraise, but not use the value to cancel? Is that, that is correct, Dee Dee. Even if there's no appraisal contingency, you can still have an appraise. But since you don't have an appraisal contingency, the fact that it doesn't appraise doesn't give you any rights to cancel. Back, back to this, two things. First of all, I've heard from lawyers that they, they generally don't like real estate agents messing with the terms of the contract. And I see real estate agents who in a counter say, this property is going to be sold as is where is, right? Like, there's some magic to those words. And the issue with this is, let's say something were to go wrong, and you are testifying, right? You're testifying in, in court. And the lawyer is asking you, what was it about the purchase agreement you were changing when you wrote in your own as is clause? What is it that you were changing? And if you're saying, well, I really wasn't changing anything, then the next question is, well, then why did you write in the clause? If you wrote in the clause, you must be changing something. If you, you know, if you're not changing anything, then don't write in anything. You see, the problem is that where is as is kind of BS, right? Was that probably written by a lawyer? And all that it does is it shows an attempt on your part to modify the existing contract, which was in fact written by lawyers. And as a general rule, I don't advise the agents that I'm working with to modify the actual terms of the contract because of something they heard some agents say, that they heard some other agents say was a good idea. And I'm not, when you sell a property, does it have to be professionally cleaned? Alright, I've heard this. If the contract says it is to be professionally cleaned, no, it doesn't. It didn't, doesn't now, it didn't 10 years ago, it doesn't in the new one. It says, all debris and personal property shall be removed. That's all that it says. Doesn't say professionally cleaned, right? And I'm not even too sure what that means. You know, if I pay somebody two dollars to clean it, is it, I don't even, you know, what does that actually mean? What happens if the seller leaves behind stuff? The question I guess is, is it good stuff? Is it stuff the buyer wants? Now, the current contract just doesn't really, you know, get into it. And so what litigation, from what I've learned, that has been involved, the courts rely on landlord-tenant rules. And so what litigation, from what I've learned, that has been involved, the courts rely on landlord tenant rules, which requires that you have eighteen days to give the tenant to remove them. So the contract now says, if items are not removed when possession is delivered to buyer, all items shall be deemed abandoned. Buyer, after first delivering to seller written notes to remove the items within three days, may pay to have such items removed or disposed of and may bring legal action, small claims court, as per this agreement, to receive reasonable cost from the seller. Now, you might be wondering, well, what form do we use? If we want to tell the seller, you've abandoned this stuff and I'm having it thrown away? And the answer is, there, there, there isn't a form. Um, however, the lawyers from CAR say they, and they are rewriting, they're writing, there are these letters that are available through CAR, and they're writing two letters. One letter is a sample that you could use as a buyer's agent to send probably to the listing agent, unless you know where the seller has moved to, saying, we're giving you free days. Then there's also a letter being written from the listing agent back to the buyer's agent that says, you know, thank you very much, I will pass this on to my client, but I'm not involved in this anymore and stop asking me to do stuff about it. How do you know, how do you get that to the seller? Well, that could be a bit of a problem. And this is something that happens in almost every purchase, it happens a lot. Yes, it happens a lot. Um, people leave stuff behind. Buyer is strongly advised to conduct investigations of the entire property to determine its present condition. Seller and agents may not be aware of everything. Improvements may not be built to code in compliance with current law or had all the required permits issued or finalized. So this sort of repeats what the statewide buyer and seller advisory say, which is about, um, we don't know, right? And if you're, it's about, we don't, I'm going to talk about um, building size, lot size in a couple of minutes, but we as agents or sellers don't necessarily know if everything is built with permits. So the buyer could however, call the local planning association. Many of them have permits online, you can do your own investigation, that sort of stuff. Seller remaining in possession after close of escrow. Again, a common thing. What, there's a couple of things here that I just want to point out. If seller has the right to remain in possession, the parties are advised to consult with their insurance and legal advisors for information about liability. So if you work with me and we are talking about writing a seller in possession form, if we're doing that, I will always be saying, you need to talk to the lender and you need to talk to whoever is doing your buyer's homeowner's insurance. First of all, most lenders have limits on how long a seller can stay and for it still to be a primary residence loan. Oftentimes, it's a maximum of sixty days. And if you're going to give the buyer, the seller ninety days to stay, you better talk to the lender first about this because that might change your loan terms. The second issue is, what about insurance? Well, the seller had homeowner's insurance, but the seller's not a homeowner anymore. The buyer had homeowner's insurance, does it cover renters? Does it cover the seller in possession? What happens if the house burns down while the seller is in possession? Is it insured by anybody at that point in time? Now, by the way, insurance companies are in the business of selling you insurance. And as long as you call them up and ask them, can I buy the policy that covers the seller when they're in possession? And I'll bet the answer is, yes, you can. Uh, you got a credit card, right? Buyer's advice to consult with buyer's lender about the impact on the buyer's loan. A qualified California real estate attorney. There was a case in Southern California that made the internet. Seller sold their house, remained in possession, and after the possession period was up, would not move out. Would not move out. Now, depending on how long the seller is there, that might have created a landlord tenant relationship. Is it difficult to evict tenants? We're going to talk about what kind of advice should you give or not give a client? You shouldn't tell your client about how the whole title. You shouldn't be giving them too detailed of tax advice. And you don't want to tell your clients how eviction rules work because it's complicated and it's changing. And if your buyer has the question, well, what if they don't move out, what can I do? They would need to talk to an attorney, right? And ask them, what can I do? And the answer oftentimes is star of three day notice to pay your quit, begin an unlawful detain your action to evict them. Anyhow, um. So at close of escrow, seller assigns the buyer any warranty rights. Seller shall deliver to buyer copies of those warranties. Agents cannot and will not determine the signability of warrants. Right, what, we don't know, right? About warranties for the refrigerator and air conditioning system. But this says the seller is supposed to turn it over. Notice it also says seller, this is an E. Otherwise, even if seller provide keys, passwords, codes, and means operate on. Even if seller remains in possession, provide keys, passwords, codes, and or means operate all locks, mailboxes, security systems, alarm, home automation systems, intranet, internet connected devices included in the purchase price, garage door openers, and all items included in paragraph three P or paragraph nine, which we're going to get to. If the property is a condominium, seller shall be responsible for securing or providing any sets items for association amenities. Buyer may be required to pay for deposit. So even if, what this is saying, even if the seller remains in possession, the seller doesn't own the property anymore. The buyer does. Should, even if this was a landlord tenant relationship, doesn't the landlord have a right to have a key? Right, and if you're the buyer, what happens if there's an emergency? What happens if there's a fire? What happens if there's a break in? And what this says is, is that even if the seller is staying there because there's a new owner, you know, the, the new owner should be given all those keys, passwords, and everything when, at, on close of escrow. Even if seller remains in possession. Just saying. Contingency, let me say, what to do if the seller doesn't provide the key? The seller is in breach of contract, right? And this is something, so some of this would be what you would need to discuss with the, if you're a listing agent, you'd like to probably go through these things with yourself, right? What do we do? Yeah, you could write nasty notes, threaten to take them to small claims court. Um, you know, it might even be, how about this, talk to a lawyer? I was about to give you some suggestions, but why not talk to a lawyer? If, if hypothetical, if it was a landlord tenant relationship and the tenant changed the locks without permission or authorization, could the owner have the locks changed back? And the answer is maybe. You just said maybe, right? But you would talk to a lawyer about that. And again, this is what it says, does everybody always follow the contract? No, not been my, not been my experience, what can you do? Um, you give a notice to perform, you know, but this is, escrow's already closed, there's, you know, you can write a nasty notes, I don't know. Contingencies and removal. This agreement, unless otherwise specified in three L or the attached CR, that's contingency removal form, which is being updated to, is contingent upon buyer obtaining the loan specified. So these are the big, there's eight contingencies, right? And we went over that in the grid. The first possible contingency is loans. Alright, and the second is appraisal. Now, I'm going to sort of summarize this a little bit. You own an appraisal are two different contingencies. One way to look at it is the loan contingency is a multi-pronged, is what one of the lawyers described it, contingency. So the loan contingency is really between the lender and the borrower. And it could involve some other issues. For example, if the borrower is unable to obtain homeowner's insurance, then the lender will probably not make the loan. That's a loan contingency. But sometimes agents think, well, I won't have a loan contingency, I'll just have an appraisal contingency because if it doesn't appraise, I ain't going to be able to get the loan. What this is going to say is that, um, as it is in highlighted here, if there is no appraisal contingency or it has been waived to remove, then failure the property to appraise does not entitle buyer to exercise the cancellation right pursuant to the loan contingency if buyer is otherwise qualified for the specific loan and buyer is able to satisfy lender's non-appraisal conditions. So even if they won't make you the loan because it doesn't appraise, that doesn't mean you can use that to get out using the loan contingency. Then it goes on to talk about insurance. Failure of buyer to obtain insurance may justify cancellation on the investigation contingency, but not the loan contingency. How would you know whether or not the lender is going to, excuse me, the insurance company would be willing to insure the property? And the one answer is ask them, right? But this insurance is considered to be something different. Buyer's obligations regarding the deposits and balance of down payment are not contingencies. Right, so the loan contingency simply means that you don't qualify for the loan or the loan that we wanted is no longer available to you. Um, if there is no appraisal contingency, removal of the loan contingency shall not be deemed removal. If there is an appraisal contingency, excuse me, removing the loan contingency does not remove the appraisal contingency. Um, those are two separate contingencies. No loan contingency, if that's checked, obtaining any loan specified is not a contingency, if buyer doesn't get the loan, the buyer may lose their deposits, may lose their deposit. Appraisal. The agreement, unless you remove your appraisal contingency, is contingent upon a written appraisal of the property by a licensed or certified appraiser at no less than the amount specified without requiring repairs or improvements to the property, without. So if the appraiser says, well, yeah, I would appraise it for one point two million if you put on a new roof or you fixed that plumbing issue or you did something, then it didn't appraise, right? It didn't appraise. Um, and the, as I mentioned last week, the new grid allows you to put in what we call the appraisal gap clause, which could say most appraised for a minimum of, which could be less than the purchase price. Appraisals are often a reliable source to verify square footage of the subject property. Or I have a question for you guys. Supposing it says in the tax records of the MLS, that the property is two thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet. That's what it says. But the appraiser, who actually measures it, says it's not two thousand seven hundred and fifty square, it's only two thousand six hundred and thirty. So can you back out? Can you back out? And the answer is no. The ability to cancel based on the measurements provided in appraisal falls within the investigation of property contingency. So you could back out if you still have an inspection contingency. But if you don't have an inspection contingency, the fact that they, because this is what some agents have heard, is say, well, it's, it's a disclosure of a new fact. No, if you don't have an inspection contingency, then the fact that the appraiser thinks it's a different sound doesn't give you the right to back out. And by the way, there's this new addendum and disclosure for square footage. We don't actually always know exactly, you know, I have an opinion, maybe it's what the square footage is, the seller has an opinion. The seller says, that's what I was told when I bought it. The appraiser has an opinion, the tax assessor has an opinion. Um, and the statewide buyer and seller advisory make it clear that this isn't always the sure thing. And they, there may be discrepancies, right? If you don't have an inspection contingency, even if the appraiser says this isn't as big as, you know, you thought, that doesn't give you a right to back out if you have an appraisal contingency. For any cancellation based upon this contingency, buyer should deliver a written copy to seller upon request by seller. So is it possible the seller doesn't want to see it? Yes. Why would a seller not want to see it? Well, first of all, it'd be probably obvious why the seller wants to see it. Because if I say to the seller, well, hey, you know, we're not moving forward, guys, we offered you eight seventy-five and only appraised for eight fifty, so we're, we're out. The seller has the right to say, prove it. Send me a copy of the appraisal. Why would a seller not want to see it? Now, there's an argument, and this is not clear, right? I listened to the lawyers too much the last few weeks talking, including about this, this is not clear. Um, but if I'm selling, does that appraisal become a document connected to the transaction such that I would have to show it if I'm the seller to any future buyers? Do I have to put the appraisal now with the historical documents? And the answer is, it's not clear. It's not clear. Now, the SPQ, which gives a list of things you're supposed to turn over, does not specifically mention an appraisal, but I think it says any investigations, inspections, and it's not clear. So sometimes the seller might say, well, I don't, don't send it to me, right? Don't do the, I actually did this, I sent one to a listing agent because there was a way I was working him, um, because it didn't appraise, and we did not have an appraisal contingency. And what I did is I sent it to him, right? Without being asked, right? My client knew what I was doing. And what I said to the listing agent is, I understand we don't have an appraisal contingency, but the property didn't appraise. You now have a copy of the appraisal, you're going to have to show that to future buyers. You're going to have to deal with the fact that it doesn't appraise. You can do it now or you can do it in the future, but you're going to have to deal with it. The listing agent told me that he was going to deny I ever sent it to him, right? Which I track all my emails and things like that. But it is not clear whether or not the seller would have to give that to future buyers. Now, you could find out in court, but you understand the disadvantage to the seller is, why wouldn't you show it to future buyers? And the answer is because they might not be willing to pay as much if they saw that appraisal. Oh, so it sounds like that might be a document that affects the value of the property. Is that what you're saying? Um, but then there's the argument that it's only an opinion and whatever, the lawyers are not sure about it. But under this contract, you're not required as the buyer to give the seller or the listing agent a copy of the appraisal unless you have an appraisal contingency and it didn't appraise and they asked for it, alright? Other than that, you're not required, it specifically says that a little bit later. No appraisal contingency means you don't have an appraisal contingency, if it doesn't appraise, you have to buy it anyhow. Investigation of the property, that's what I was referring to earlier in the default setting, this is seventeen days. It says the buyer can, and it's the, um, the, the buyer can investigate the property, seventeen days, right? It's one of the contingencies. Review of seller's documents, right? Which is usually seven days, you can change that in the grid. Title, um, a little bit different. The current RPA says buyer's acceptance of the condition of the title is a contingency of the agreement. What this is saying is a little bit different. It says that it's contingent upon buyer's ability to obtain the title policy provided for in paragraph thirteen G, which we haven't gotten to yet, and on buyer's review of the prelim and items that are disclosed are observable, even if it's not on record, like neighbors using your property, um, and then recorded easement or something like that. Um, so, uh, we'll talk about that when I get to title policy. But rather than just saying, if you don't like the prelim, you can get out, um, it's a little more specific in that is there something on the title that would prevent the buyer from getting the type of title insurance the contract calls for? Buyer has five days after receipt to review a revised prelim of any and cancel if it shows something material or substantial. Now, this, by the way, as well as all of these, assumes that you have not removed your inspection contingencies. You haven't removed all those contingencies. that you have not removed your inspection contingencies, you haven't removed all those contingencies. If you make an uncontingent offer and they don't even have a prelim yet and they don't even have homeowner association documents, then you can't use that content to back out. Not only does it say it in the contract later, if you read the contingency removal form, the one that we currently use, and you look at the very bottom of the form, it says if you've removed the contingency, you can't use it to back out, even if you discovered something new. That's what it says. Paragraph, so F is the homeowner association documents. G was paragraph eight in the old contract about leased or leased items. There's mostly the same, a little bit different, a little bit different. Buyer's review of inability and willingness to assume any lease maintenance agreement or other ongoing financial obligations or good set the property subject and leave disclosed pursuant to 9B6 as then ran free L3 are the, the grid, nine is coming up. A contingency of this agreement, any assumption or belief shall not require any financial obligation or contribution of the seller. So sometimes it might say that there is a fee that it has to be paid. If you're going to switch the less see of the solar, right? So what are we talking about here? Most common one is solar panels. It could be propane tanks. There could be other items that are in the property that are not owned by the seller but are leased or leased, that means there's a loan on them. And it says that in order to move it to the buyer, the seller is not obligated to pay any of that. Seller, after first delivering a notice to perform, may cancel the agreement if the buyer refuses to enter into any necessary written agreements to accept responsibility with the seller disclosed leased or leased item. So what if the buyer can't qualify, won't qualify for the leased or leased items? It's an issue. And the reason it's an issue is that even if you don't, if you're the buyer, you don't have a contingency for this. If you don't do it as the buyer, it means the seller is going to have problems, right? With the lease and the leased items, and it says that the seller can cancel. Removal or waiver of contingencies with offer, this is a little more specific than the old contract. Buyer shall have no obligation to remove a contractual contingency unless the seller has provided all the documents, reports, disclosures and information pertaining to that contingency. However, if buyer does remove a contingency without first receiving all required information from seller, buyer is relinquishing any contractual rights that apply to that contingency. That was the question I asked last week. Right? You, you don't have a contingent offer, but they didn't give you a prelim, they didn't give you HOA docs, didn't do any of that stuff. Now they give it to you, can you back out? And for the reasons that I just stated, the answer is no. But it's, it's a contractual contingency. By the way, if it was an H D report or a TDS, the answer is yes. And that's because the law says so. Not in the contract cannot, you cannot waive it, that's coming up. If buyer removes or waives any contingencies without adequate understanding of the property condition, buyer is acting against the advice of agent. Right? Because we would never advise a buyer to buy a property without contingencies unless they understood everything about the property, we wouldn't. We wouldn't do that. Removal of contingencies or cancellation. Buyer has within a certain time period to remove the contingency. I asked this question last week. Maybe this isn't the right place, it's going to come up, I'll save that. For the contingencies for review of seller's documents, prelim condo documents, buyer shall within the time period of five days after receipt of seller's documents, whichever occurs later, remove the contingency, right? So if you have an HOA contingency, it's 17 days, that's what the default is. You can change it or five days from receipt. If you don't have an HOA contingency, you're rolling the dice and assuming that there's nothing scary in those HOA documents, you're going to buy it anyhow. If buyer, what happens if the buyer does not remove the contingency? Seller, after first giving buyer a notice to perform, shall have the right to cancel this agreement and give the buyer their deposit back. That's coming up. And give the buyer their deposit back. Sale of buyer's property, there's another form. The default setting is it's not contingent. If it is, you've got to market in the grid and do the CLP form. Items excluded and included in the sale. Now, do I have this here? Is that it? Or is, is this it? It's not it? Oh, well. This is what happens when I'm switching computers. So back in the grid, there's a whole bunch of little boxes that you could check. Some of which were boxes in the old art, in the current RPA, some of which weren't. So what this paragraph is going to be saying is, is that these are sort of hardwired in. Alright, and by the way, this is, we're going to, we're going to go probably longer than an hour. I hope you guys want to stick with me, I'm going to record it. Otherwise, I'll have to do another plan. For some reason, it just takes longer, right? But basically, what this is saying is that, let's start with this. Items listed as included or excluded in the MLS, flyers, marketing materials or disclosures are not part of the agreement. Doesn't matter what the MLS says. Doesn't matter what the flyer says. It doesn't matter, if it's not in the contract, it's not in the contract. Now, 9B, 1 and 2 are more specific than the current one in that it actually says, what are window coverings? Now, you might think that's pretty obvious. Anything that covers a window, blinds, drapes, if it covers the windows. So they're now being specific, drapery, shutters or any of the materials that cover any portion of the window. Attached floor coverings, television antennas, satellite dishes, cool spa, not limited to TV, motorized automated cool thing or whatever, garage door openers, where else, or something else you're seeing, paint, gas lines, great solar panel, but no openings have been made but are not checked on the shutters. Anyhow, that's... Whereas I'm looking for something specific, not many, you know. I garage door openers, in-ground landscaping, water features, sound water, soft water. Light bulbs, including smart bulbs, and all items specified in 3P of currently existing at time of acceptance. So one of the changes is, what about mirrors in the bathroom? And what it says someplace, I'm looking for it, is, is that those are included in the sale, even if they're on a hook. Right? And I'm sure I'm going to find it. Security systems includes any devices, right? We're not limited to, all these alarms are included. Home automation systems are included. Any smart home devices that are physically affixed are included, the ring, right? Video thing is included. Now, what may happen is the buyer might need to go get a backtop or a tablet or some smart device. That's not included, right? It's not included. Non-dedicated devices, smart home and security control are included in the sale except for non-dedicated personal computer, tablet, phone used to control such features. So the seller doesn't have to give you a tablet or a laptop. You have to go get your own. Buyer knows that a separate device might be required and the buyer would have to get one, you should change your passwords. Leased or leaned items, I already talked about that. If there's a loan or a lease on something, you're supposed to turn it over. Items excluded from the sale. One of the differences here is that in the old, the current form, it's not old yet. It says brackets are, are supposed to be left behind unless you check a box that say they're not. Now it says the brackets are going to be removed and the seller does not have to fix the hole, I mean, has to fix the holes and, and cover it, but doesn't have to repaint. It's pretty much what it says. Allocations of costs. I guess I'm going to be able to finish the relative. Inspection reports and certificates. What that's saying is even if the seller provides or pays for a termite report, it doesn't mean they have to do the work. Just because the seller has produced a roof report, which says you need $3,500 worth of roof repairs, just because somebody pays for the report doesn't mean they have to do the work. If you want them to do the work, you're going to have to get another form. By the way, what I'm going to do, starting later probably, is I'm going to go through all of the other forms and things that are being revised that are connected to the contract. So we're going to look at the clauses and we're going to look at the forms and I'm going to have more time to discuss it than I do now, although it seems like I'm taking a lot of time. Government required and corrected or remedial actions. Legally required installations and property improvements. What would those be? So they have smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors and the water heater is supposed to be strapped and braced. Can you please go over the process for once in contract and when the loan gets approved and the timeline for closing disclosures? Also, what does it mean for bank tables funds? I'm not, I'm not really sure where that was, I'll have to go back. Once in, when the loan gets approved and the timeline for closing disclosures. Alright, so I'm not going to do that right now. Brandon, if you want to reach out to me, the closing disclosures is a three-day rule that they have to receive it before consummation, which means signing the loan documents. That's a different class, which, I mean, there's a bunch of things that could come from this contract. I'm already going to be lifelong today. Alright, so I think I mentioned that required installation of smoke alarms, carbon monoxide or other water heaters will be completed within the time specified, if it's the seven days. If buyer is paying, you can, it doesn't say that the seller has to pay for those things, just that it has to be done. Thank you, Monica. Point of sale requirements. Los Angeles County, from what I understand, has some requirements regarding insulation. Santa Cruz County has water conserving plumbing fixture requirements. How would you find out whether or not Tucucaosta County or Alameda County or some other county has these? First, you could Google for local area disclosures. You could ask your association of realtors for local area disclosures. You could ask local title companies for local area disclosures that they're aware of. And a point of sale requirement is something in inspection, like in Santa Cruz, where I have closed properties, they send an inspector out to look at the toilets and check the plumbing fixtures to see if they are in fact low flow and water conserving. If there's a reinspection fee because of those rec government requirements, the seller's going to pay for that. If information and advice, it says, we don't know what we're talking about, as agents are just kidding. It says agents do not have expertise in this area and cannot ascertain all the requirements. Usually the associations of realtors have provided this. Home warranty is a little bit different. In the past, there was boxes you could check for upgrades. Now, all it does back in the grid is say what the maximum amount is if you're asking the seller to pay for it. It basically says that the buyer can take as many upgrades as the buyer wants. If those upgrades exceeds the amount that the seller has obligated to pay, the buyer would have to make up the difference. Eleven, other disclosures, right? There are five big ones. One is the TDS. Number two is the NHD. By the way, TDS is on all one to four units unless they're probate, trust sales, bankruptcy, foreclosure. Most sales, one to four units. NHD is required just about all the time, even on commercial property. Other statutory and supplemental disclosures. Yes, it's true, the civil code does not mention a seller property questionnaire. But the civil code mentions other required disclosures. Has anybody died on the property in the last three years? Are you within a mile of a military ordinance? So the SPQ, and if it's not a property, the SPQ is required and the TDS is required in the contract, if the TDS is not required, we would do the exempt seller disclosure, which simply asks those questions. And although the law does not refer to that specific disclosure document, the law does say the seller has to make those disclosures. That's what I'm going to say about that. Way more, I mean, I could go on for a lot more about what constitutes a completed TDS. That will be another class. Lead-based paint. If the property was built before 1978, not on, not during 1978, but before 1978, then they have to comply with lead-based paint disclosures. But 1978 on no lead-based paint. Fire hardening and defensible space is a new one. Right? Which is, if, it says for any transaction where a TDS is required, the property is in a higher, very high fire hazard severity zone. How do you know? And the home was constructed before 2010, right? Most agents are just including this anyhow, but those are the, that's when it's required. How would you know if it's in one of those zones? You would ask the NHD company, dispense, defensible space. Again, if it's something that requires a TDS, then you need to do this disclosure, it's connected to the other one. Waiver of statutory lead or other disclosures are prohibited by law. You can't waive the TDS. So this is why if you give the buyer a T, the buyer has no contingencies, no contingencies. When you haven't given them an NHD or a TDS, they can still cancel. Because that's not a contingency of the contract, that's a legal part of the law. It just says they can't. If you give it to them after you're in contract, they are given a right of cancellation, they cannot waive it. So there, this is why we want to collect all this stuff in advance. Return of signed copies, I'm not really going to talk more about that. Termination rights. Again, it's saying that you may have a termination right if it's a statutory required. You otherwise would have a termination right if you kept the contingency for that. H is withholding, this is FERTA. Most of the time, this is handled through the escrow company as a qualified substitute. There's, they're modifying that form a little bit at CAR to make it easier, you know, to understand. Because a lot of times, the seller doesn't want to give their social security number or that sort of thing, but the, the title company is going to collect it anyhow. Megan's Law, the, what if there are sex offenders in the neighborhood? You're not required to do anything other than give them a link to where they can look and see. But what if you as an agent, because you sold in this neighborhood? Or the seller happens to know that there is a sex offender in the neighborhood? You know it. Can you get away with just giving them the link and letting them look it up? And the answer is no. If you know, you have to tell the buyer what's in the neighborhood. That's something judges would decide. But neither the seller or agent are required to check the website. If the buyer wants further information, they can go to the website. But just to be clear, if you know, because you had transactions in the past and somebody looked it up, that there is a sex offender in that neighborhood. We actually had a case once where the seller was trying to sell the house. The listing agent, they found out about the, the sex offender in the neighborhood, the buyer canceled. The seller listed it with another agent from outside that farm area. Now, the seller is supposed to disclose, because the seller had knowledge, but the seller didn't want to do that because they didn't think anybody would want to buy it. And the reason they didn't use the agent that had it before is because that agent knew and would have to tell. So they went and got another agent who didn't know. Who didn't know. And so they didn't say anything, just to try and get around it. The liquid underground gas, there's a place where you can check. Usually that's on the NHD. Homeowner association documents and natural hazards. I'm not going to really get into that in any great detail, there's not a lot of changes here other than there's two parts to the HOA documents. One part is what the seller is required to give to a buyer, which is hardwired into our system, something to... which is hardwired into our system, something the seller pays for. Then there are other things that are not required by statute, but what we usually give. There's a certification that sometimes the lender requires that would also be paid for by a buyer because it's a loan thing, right? And anyhow, it's, it explains that. Natural and environmental hazards, there's those booklets. Does the law require the environmental booklet? Not really, but it says that if you give people the environmental booklet, you have relieved yourself of lots of other disclosures and explanations. Is the earthquake disclosure is required if the property was built before January first nineteen sixty? But usually, we fill them out anyhow because it's sometimes hard to keep track of that. By the way, if it's an unreinforced mezzanine rebuilding, it's January first nineteen seventy-five. You know, it's better to just get it done. But there's a, 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 an actual form in part of the earthquake hazards disclosure where the seller's asked questions. And it's just all the known facts. If there's any other known material facts you need to disclose it. Investigation of the property. Buyer's investigation, you can do anything you want, pretty much, as long as you don't damage the property, bring the government or obligate or, you know, create a lien on the seller. That's, I'm summarizing a lot here, but that's pretty much what it said before. You cannot cause or make it invasive or destructive. You can't drill holes, make holes in walls, things like that. You can't bring in the government. You can't do that, if you're, as part of your investigations. So, so make the property available for investigation. Seller's not obligated to move personal property, right? Sometimes, once the seller's moved out, we find scratches and things like that. The seller is not required to move any personal property. I'm gonna just say this, because I don't, some of you may be bailing on me as I'm going on. Stages. Window coverings. All window coverings are included. What about window coverings for stager? Oh, that's actually in this contract. If, does the buyer know necessarily what, what things that are in the house were staged items and which are not? Does the buyer know whether or not those blinds were staged or blinds or not? Now, the contract says that all window coverings are to be included unless excluded in the contract. So what that would mean is that if the stager has put up all that stuff, window coverings, you need to say in the contract, if you're representing the seller, that that's not included in what they are. During buyer investigations, can the buyer turn on the washing machine? Yes, the property inspector usually turns on washing machines and things like that. That's probably doesn't fall into a invasive or destructive investigation. Minally invasive testing required for a termite report isn't the same thing, but generally, a lot of times I've seen property inspectors, you know, run the dishwasher and things like that. Don't know about the washer and dryer, don't know. The question is, are they included? Title investing, I, I'm going to sort of go through this a little bit. I'm gonna summarize now. So what it says is the buyer is going to get a particular type of title insurance, right? And if the buyer can't get that title insurance, this is down here in G, that the title company may have other title insurance that they will give. So there are different types of title policies. And if you're not getting an alte C O T A policy, you might wanna talk to the title company, right? About what are the other policies? What else do I wanna say on this page? I'm gonna go a little bit quicker because I'll go on, there'll be more, I'll do more. Look, this is a fun paragraph right here. Buyer is a legal entity, LLC. And the property price is more than three hundred thousand, that's pretty much everywhere, without a bank loan or other external financing, geographic targeting or, alright? So what, what this is saying is, is that if you are an LLC and you're paying all cash for a property, the government may wanna know. Because maybe you're a drug dealer and you're using that to launder money, right? Now, it doesn't apply in every county. It applies in Santa Cruz County, San Mateo County, San Francisco County, Los Angeles County, and San Diego County, right? It doesn't apply in Alameda County or Tucatla Costa County because, well, I don't think they have any drugs in Alameda County. That may not be true. But anyhow, those are the counties that it applies to now. And if your buyer's an LLC paying all the tax, you might wanna point out to them that they're going to be reported by the escrow company. Because they may wanna know, you know, where did they get the cash, right? They just might wanna know. Tax consequences, here to get a bead. You don't have to say when in this contract, how you're taking title. You don't have to say joint tenants, tenants in common, community property, LLC trust. What this is saying is that you can change your mind, right? And during, you can tell title, how you wanna take the title. What else we wanted to do? Time periods, paragraph fourteen. This was paragraph fourteen, but it had a time period. This is talking about removal of contingencies. How am I doing? Let me see if I've lost too many people, not too many, alright? So back in that grid, right? The, the default setting in paragraph fourteen to seventeen days, back in the grid, there's this long list of things, right? Nine B six is least early items. Paragraph ten is point of sale. Eleven A is the TDS. Eleven B is lead. Eleven C is fire hardening. D is defensible space. Eleven H is FERTA. Eleven K is the condo CID, kind of interest development. Eleven L is the NHD. Eleven M is all material facts. Thirteen A is the prelim. Thirteen D is other known titled effects. And paragraph twenty-eight is arguing the legal entity, right? That group here, right? Seller is, that's what seller is responsible for, right? That group. The buyer is given whatever time period you put into the grid to review them. Buyer may request that the seller make repairs. The seller does not have to make repairs. The seller does not even have to respond to the repair requests. Can you be a sole agent of the contract with best, a sole buyer as joint tenants with another person, for example? And the answer to that would be yes, if your lender doesn't care. Yes, if your lender doesn't care. If it's all cash, they don't care, nobody cares. But if, you would need to talk to the lender if you're adding or changing people to the title, because sometimes lenders have, you know, feelings about that, right? And they usually, many lenders will require that whoever is on the title is on the loan and versa vice versa, right? So what this says is that we can ask for repairs. And the RR form, or the RR, it sounds like a pirate, you know, form. If the seller does not agree or does not respond, buyer is not contractually entitled to have repairs done. So you have, let's say seventeen days for your inspection contingency. During the seventeen days, you don't remove your contingency. You write a letter to the seller saying, I want you to fix all this stuff. The seller won't fix anything, doesn't even respond, usually they don't respond. Escrows are being difficult for some reason, not lenders. It depends, I think escrow, the, I'm not gonna get into that, right? Sorry, the, the thing about adding people to the title. Because the, the reason an escrow company might care about that is because the contract is escrow instructions, right? But you could close and then add somebody to the title, right? How about that? Then you don't need escrow to help. What happens? We have a seventeen day inspection contingency. We do not remove our contingencies in seventeen days. We do not have an extension. Is that it? Are we done? Do we lose our deposit? And the answer is no. I have agents saying, you're out of contract. What does that mean? What does it mean, right? So it's eighteen days since the acceptance. We haven't removed our contingency. You get this nasty email from the listing agent, you're out of contract. That, by the way, is not a legal term, right? That, this, what does that mean? The contract is dead? It, it doesn't exist anymore? Then what does this say? Parable, by the way, this was in the old, this is, it's been in the contract for a long time. Continuation of contingency, even if after the end of the time specified in paragraph three L, that is default in seventeen days. And before seller cancels, if at all, pursuant to fourteen C, buyer retains the right in writing to either remove the remaining contingencies or cancel the agreement based upon the removal of the contingencies. So what this is saying is, if there's seventeen days and we don't remove our contingency, we're not out of contract, because the contract actually has a clause for this. We, we, we ought to get an extension. But let's say we don't get an extension, right? Because the seller says, I ain't gonna give you one. What has to happen now? We're still in contract, by the way, despite what other agents may have told you. We're still in contract. So what has to happen is the seller has to give the buyer a two day notice to perform. What if the buyer doesn't remove the contingency at the end of the two day notice to perform? Then what happens? Then the seller can cancel the contract but must return the deposit. Now, there's only one scenario in this contract where the buyer's gonna lose their deposit. And I'm gonna talk about that, because this is sort of where we're getting right now and summarize it, and then we'll get on with our lives. There's only one scenario in this contract where the buyer loses their deposit. And the scenario is the buyer has removed all of their contingencies. The seller has given the buyer a demand to close escrow three days. And the buyer does not close in those three days. That's it. That's it. If the buyer does not remove a contingency, the buyer does not lose their deposit. They, if the seller cancels the buyer because the buyer isn't willing to remove the contingency, the seller has to give the buyer their deposit back. Again, the only time the buyer would lose their deposit under the contract is if they're given the demand to close escrow, which gives them three days, unless you modify them, and they don't close escrow in three days. So does that mean that the seller now gets the money? No, no, it's not that simple. By the way, what if the buyer won't sign the cancellation form? Doesn't matter, one side can cancel the contract. But what about the deposit? It's in escrow, that's different. The escrow, the loss of a deposit is not an automatic forfeiture. What that means is that even if you've been given the demand to close escrow in three days and you don't close escrow in three days, it doesn't mean that the title company is wiring the deposit to the seller. It's not what happens. If the buyer will not sign, there are only three ways for the, to get the money out of the title company and give it to either party, three ways. One is that both the buyer and seller sign a document releasing the deposit to the other side. Right, that's one. Two, arbitration orders the title company to release the deposit or a court orders the title company to release the deposit. So the only time that the seller is entitled to the deposit is the demand to close escrow scenario, when the buyer doesn't have any contingencies and can't close on time. But that doesn't mean the seller now has the money. Can the seller sell the property to somebody else? Not using the same escrow company. And there's a problem in that if, for some reason, that buyer, original buyer came alive and got a lawyer, they might file a dispendence, which is a notice of pending lawsuit and screw up your other sale. So a lot of times what happens is that once they're confronted with this, they being the seller and the listing agent, what do you wanna do? You wanna hang on to the escrow, right? You're not gonna get the money out easily, not without a lawyer usually, or, or the buyer to agree to release the money. What are you going to do? Take the property off the market and hang on and fight for the deposit? Or cancel and put the property back on the market and sell it to somebody else? You see, it's not an automatic thing. And I hear all the time agents saying, if you don't remove your contingencies on time, you're gonna lose your deposit. The contract's never said that, because not, at least not for the last ten or fifteen, twenty years, maybe. It's been a long time. There, they, this is called active removal. Passive removal was a long time ago, where it was a box you could check that would say that at the end of the seventeen days, if we don't hear from the buyer, they've removed the contingency. It's not what this timeframe says. It hasn't been like that in a really long time. The buyer has to actively remove the contingencies. And if the buyer doesn't remove the contingency, the seller can cancel after giving you two day notice, but they have to give the buyer the deposit back, right? The idea that if you don't remove your contingency on time and you don't get an extension of the contingency, you're going to lose your deposit is just stuff real estate agents say. But it is found nowhere in the contract. It's contradicted by the contract. And the California Association of Realtors Legal Department has put out a legal Q and A on the subject in which they say, this is clear. This is clear, right? You have to give the buyer the deposit back. So I, now, if the buyer, however, if the seller wants to go after the buyer, the buyer, if the buyer loses, in addition to losing their deposit, there's a thousand dollar penalty in the contract. And it also says that they would have to pay the seller's reasonable attorney fees. So the question is, does the seller want to just not sell the property for now, hire a lawyer and go after the buyer in order to get the deposit? Not often. Now, by the way, I'm talking now and I'm basing what I'm saying on what the California Association of Realtors Legal Department says. But when you get to this point in the transaction, your buyer needs to talk to a lawyer, right? And you, as an agent, might want to call the CAR legal hotline and chat with them. And they're gonna tell you pretty much what I said, except they're, they're gonna say, your buyer, no, your seller, you're, you need to go get a lawyer. Because this isn't as clear as most agents think. So I'm summarizing, right? Notice that release of funds will require, let's look at this paragraph here, all beautiful bold. A release of funds will require mutual signed release instructions from the parties. Judicial decision or arbitration or war, it sounds like what I said. A party may be subject to a penalty of a thousand dollars to refuse sign, the refusal to sign the cancellation instructions if no good faith dispute exists. Now, a lot of times the buyer might be saying, oh, there's things I didn't know that was wrong with the property and they didn't find out. And I know I don't have a contingency, but I don't want to buy the property they should have told me. By the way, arbitrators don't necessarily just deal with the contract says. They deal with they think is fair. I have some experience. And also, it would say later that you might have to pay lawyer fees if you lose. Notice agents and escrow holders are not qualified to provide an opinion on whether or not be acted in good faith or who's entitled to the deposited funds. You should get a lawyer, right? But one thing I really wish I could get into real estate agents' head and take it out is this idea that if the contingencies are not removed on time, we're out of contract. And then your deposit is in jeopardy, right? You know, and I ask agents when they're saying this to me, find the clause in the contract that says that and send it to me. Because I'm sending them copies of deposits and say, well, pretty much the opposite. Proration and compensation and all of that stuff, we're running towards the end. I'm just, let me just say this, real estate agents are not parties to this agreement. So a statement in the purchase agreement that the buyer is going to get a credit from the buyer's agent is not a legally binding part of the contract. Because the agent is not a part of the contract. Now, we usually put it in the contract because everybody thinks that if it's in the contract, we've made some legal obligation to do it. But real estate brokers are not parties to the contract, right? I'm just, just pointing that out, right? It could be done in a separate way. It, it just, it's, we don't have to be, we're not partners to the contract. Selection of service providers, MLS, how about this? We don't, how many of you have ever had a buyer that would like MLS? How many of you have ever had a buyer that would like the M L S to take the pictures now? Ever had, ever had a buyer that wants the pictures now? I have them called Zillow, and Zillow sometimes may or may not. But it says here, buyer acknowledges. Right? Buyer acknowledges that any pictures, videos, or plans, images, or other information about the property that have been or will be inputted to the M L S or internet portals or both, if the instructions to seller and compliance of penalties rules will not be removed after close of escrow. Because of this California Civil Code section. Really? You're saying that there's a California Civil Code section that says this? Really? Alright, here's a copy of it. Now, you guys are going to love this first part. I'll bet you're going to love this part, look at this paragraph here. This is section ten eighty-eight, for those of you that keep a copy of the Civil Code by your bed, read it at night, we have insomnia. If an agent or appraiser places a listing or other information in the multiple listing service, that agent or appraiser shall be responsible for the truth of all representations and statements made by the agent or appraiser of which that agent or appraiser had knowledge or reasonably should have had knowledge to anyone injured by their falseness or inaccuracy. I'm going to let that sit in for a moment for your listing agents. Okay? And we're responsible for any lines we put into the M L S. What also does it say? Um, M L S shall retain and make accessible on its computer system and any all listing and other information placed in the multiple listing service by an agent or appraiser for no less than three years from the date the listing was placed in that multiple listing service. In other words, they're not going to take down the pictures. It's going to be in the M L S. Now, you might try to get Zillow or whatever, you can banter them. I have actually had agents say, well, how do we get the pictures off the M L S? And usually I'm thinking, how old are you? Right? You know, I mean, how, uh, how do you get something that's been posted on the M L S away, I mean, from the internet, out of the internet? Uh, no, no. Um, you, you, that's a very difficult thing to do. Once it's hit the internet, it's gone. Now, assignment. Can we say that buyer's name or assignee? How about that? That sounds like fun. Buyer's name or assignee. Well, what this is saying is that the seller has to agree to assignments, but the seller cannot unreasonably withhold assignments. But it says that prior to assignments, look at this, prior, oops, that's not it. Prior to assignments, did I, did I close it? Did I close it? There we go. Maybe I did, because I'm checking to me things, probably. What it says is that prior to the assignment, the buyer has to tell the seller who they're assigning to. Mm-hmm. And that, should they sign all the documents and things like that in the assignment? Yes. Does the contract require it? No. It says, prior to assignment, buyer shall disclose to seller the names of the assignees and the amount of any monetary consideration between buyer and assignee. Hmm. Prior to assignment, buyer shall disclose to seller the name of the assignee and the amount of any monetary consideration between buyer and assignee. Buyer shall provide assignee with all documents related to this agreement, when it goes on. If it's silently, if the signee is wholly owned or a trust of the buyer, that assignee does not need to reinitial or resign any. But if it's somebody else, the answer is probably yes. Um, there's, yeah, you have seventeen days, that's what this is referring to. If you're the buyer, to ask the seller if you can assign it. If you wait more than seventeen days, then you've given up your right to assign it. So what that means is, two days before escrow closes, you waited probably too long to assign the contract to somebody else. You waited too long. And there's counting days, I would, I would look at that. The day we sign something is day zero, the next day is day one. What, and one of the other things, let me just, this is a big change. Let me just do this, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have done this earlier. Deliver, delivery, or deliver. The current contract says personal delivery, when is the acceptance communicated to the buyer? And the answer is, personal delivery to the buyer or the buyer's agent. If the buyer's agent, I mean, this is back in paragraph thirty-one, wrote in their name. What the new contract says is that when you have sent the document, it's been delivered. So personal receipt means a copy of the document or applicable link to the document is in the possession of the party or authorized agent regardless of the delivery method used, I mean, email, text, or other. Or an electronic copy of the document as applicable link to the document has been sent to any of the designated electronic delivery addresses provided in the broker period, right? Really? So let's, we're almost done with this anyhow, we're in a skip down here. By the way, terms in, um, I'm not going to get involved in this, because the legal signer, this is replacing the representative capacity, arbitration and mediation, see where it says expiration of offers, buyer's signature, acceptance. Here's where we would be putting in the name of the LLC or whatever. But this is the last thing I'm going to cover. Agent signatures and designated electronic delivery addresses. So let's say I put in E X P Realty Company Incorporated, our number, my name, my license number, my date. Uh, more than one agent or whatever. Designated electronic delivery, I put in my email address and or my cell phone number. And I have an alternate, which is my assistant transaction coordinator. Um, and I put in her email address. And what this says, and then we're going to throw in the towel for today. What this says is that when the seller hits send on the email to the designated delivery address, it's delivered. I mean, when it is sent, it is now delivered, not received. Right? Now, you don't have to track the email anymore. Alright? You don't have to prove that the buyer actually got it. Now, if I'm the listing agent, I want to make sure that the buyer's agent has sold this out. Right? I want to make sure. Because when, if the, if not, I'm going to make them so without. Because it changes what delivery of the documents needs. And the link thing is, because H O A documents, for example, hard to attach. Um, if the other side doesn't want links, they would need to say so, because you'll notice when I went through that form, I mentioned that it said, or links to the documents. When sent constitutes delivery of the documents. That's a big change. By the way, I'm going to be doing more classes on this. Because there's all these different documents and things that are connected. And I'm going to, I'm going to do more, right? Because, don't you want more? And by the way, if you're worried about, how am I going to do all this? I have enough trouble with the current time track and I could use help. Why don't you reach out to me? Because maybe we could work out something where I could help you with this. And I could have done, I, I, I realized another two hours, but I, you know, I've over, I've overstayed my welcome already. So there'll be more of this, once all the, by the way, in December, you're not going to have a chance to use the old contract. I'm going to be going through the different forms and things like that. Alright, very good, thank you guys. Have a great day. It's been fun. Hasn't it? Alright, bye, everybody.